இப்படிப்பட்ட ஆவிகுறிய விழிப்புனர்வு கூட்டங்கள் நடத்துவதினால் உண்மையாகவே நீங்கள் ஆசிர்வாதமானவர்கள் ஏன் ஆசிர்வாதமானவர்கள் அப்படினா கத்துரூடிய வசனங்களைக் கேட்பதினால் இந்த திருக்கதர்ச்சின வசனங்களை மாசிக்கிறவன் பாக்கியவான் இதைக் கேட்கிறவன் பாக்கியவான் இதன்படி நடக்கிறவன் பாக்கியவான் நீங்கள் என்னிலும் என் வார்த்தை உங்களிலும் நிலைக்குத் திருந்தால் நீங்கள் மிகுத்த கணிகளைக் கொடுப்பீர்கள் அதனால் திருவசனங்களைக் கேட்பதற்கும் நெவுள்ளங்களைத் திருந்து இப்படிப்பட்ட கூட்டங்களிலே நீங்கள் பங்குபிருவதின் உணமாக உடைய ஆன்மீக வாழ்க்கை வலருகரது அப்படின்னு சொல்லும்போது உண்மையாகவே நீங்கள் பாக்கியவான் இதற்கான அந்த பிரிய மய்ச்சிகளெல்லாம் அந்த குரிய ஐயாபிரகள் செய்துகொண்டிருப்பது உண்மையிலே நகுச்சி கத்துரூடியினும் வெண்டிய திரணாரம் சுதத்தாலும் திரப்புவாராக ஹலேலூய சர் கத்துரூடிய வசனங்களை திருப்புப்போம் நல்லபிதாவே மக்கனந்தி சொல்லுகிறோம் உடைய வசனங்களை நாங்கள் தியானிக்க உடைய பாத்திலே கூடியிருக்கிறோம் எங்களோடு இடைப்புடிவிராக நெப்புள்ளிக்கு என்ன புரிய வெண்டுமோ அது புரிந்துகொள்ள ஆவியானவரே உதவி செய்தவர் ஏசுவி நாமத்தில் வெண்டுகிறோம் நல்லபிதா அன்பாய அளைத்த அன்னாயாபுக்கு வெண்டும் உதவி செய்தான்டிகளே சொல்லுகிறேன் கத்துரூடிய நல்லவா ஒன்று சாம்மைவெலியின் புத்தக மூன்றாம் மதிகாரம் ஒன்னாபத வசன ஒன்று சாம்மை மூன்றாம் மதிகாரம் ஒன்னாபத வசன சவுளின் குடும்பத்திற்கும் தாவிதின் குடும்பத்திற்கும் நெடுநால் யுத்தம் மடந்தது தாவிதின் வர வர வெலத்தம சவுளின் குடும்பத்தாரோ வர வர வெலவின பட்டுப் போனார் நீங்கள் படித்த இந்த வேத பகுதிலே ரெண்டு விதமான குடும்பங்கள் எழுதப்பட்டிருக்கற குடும்பம் என்றுதான் இருக்கற ஒரு குடும்பம் வர 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 அது கொஞ்சம் நம்ப ஆட் பண்ணிக்கலாம் ஒரு வர இரண்டு வரவானா ஒரு ஐஞ்சார்களுடைய போடுகிறான் வர 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 ஒரு குடும்பம் வெலத்தது இன்னொரு குடும்பம் வர 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 வெலவின பட்டுப் போனார்கள் ஒரு விஸ்வாசி வர 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 வெலமடைந்தான் ஒரு விஸ்வாசி வர 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 வெலவினமாக ஒரு தலைவன் வர 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 வெலமடைந்தான் இன்னொரு தலைவன் வர 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 வெலவின பட்டுப் போரா ஒரு ஊழியன் வர 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 வெலமடைந்தான் இன்னொரு ஊழியன் வர 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 வெலவினமாக அந்த குரிய ஐயா மக்களே தேவனுடைய புல்லகிலே நீங்கள் வெலவினர்களா அல்லது வெலமுள்ளவர்களா ஆர் சோர் ஆர் யுவிக் ஆவிகுறிய வாழ்க்கை என்பது ஏதோ திருச்சபைக்கு வருவதும் ஆண்டவரைத் தொழுதுகொள்வதும் நம்முடைய விண்ணப்பங்களை வெண்டுதல்களிலாம் தேவனுடைய தம் சொல்வதும் அவர் நமக்கு செய்வது மட்டும் ஆவிகுறிய வாழ்க்கையால் நடிக்கடி உங்களுக்கு போதித்திருக்கிறேன் வரும் போதெல்லாம் ஆவிகுறிய வாழ்க்கை என்பது இருப்பக்கங்களிக்கொண்டது ஒரு பக்கம் என்ன அப்படினா நான் ஆராதிக்கிறேன் உடைய ஆண்டவரை என்னுடைய அறிவி சரியாக புரிந்துகொள்வது நான் ஏன் அவரை ஆராதிக்கிறேன் வசனம் என்ன சொல்கிறது அப்படினா கிருஸ்து ஏசுவை அறிகிற அறிவே மெய்யான அறிவு இதற்காகத்தான் பவுல்புடை பிடி சொல்லுகிற இந்த ஏசுவை அறிகிற அறிவின் மேன்மைக்காக எல்லாவற்றையும் குப்பையும் நச்சமென்று என்னுகிறேன் அப்போ நான் சேவிக்கிறேன் உடைய ஆண்டவரை நான் இன்னாரின்று சரியாக புரிந்துகொள்ள வேணம் இது ஆவிகுறிய வாழ்க்கையினடையும் ஒரு பகுதி இன்னொரு பகுதி என்ன அப்படினா இந்த ஆவிகுறிய வாழ்க்கையில் இந்த ஆண்டவரை அறிந்திருக்கிற அறிவி நான் யாராக இருக்கிறேன் பூதாற்றாயம் நான் யாராக இருக்கிறேன் நான் எப்பிதம் அவருக்கு உண்மையாக இருக்கும்படியும் என்னைப் பட்டியாறிவு ஒன்று தேவனைப் பட்டியாறிவு இன்னொன்று என்னைப் பட்டியாறி இதைச் சரியாகச் செய்தவும் நான் இதுதான் ஆவிகுறிய வாழ்க்கை நாளைத்துக்கு வருவது ஜபிப்பது இந்த கிருஸ்துவ சடங்குகள் இருக்குப் பாருங்க இதை எல்லாம் செய்வதெல்லாம் கட்டிப்பாகச் செய்ய வேண்டும் இதான் இவைவெல்லாம் என்ன ஆவிகுறிய வாழ்க்கைக்கு அநுகூலமாக இருக்குது பட்டி இது ஆவிகுறிய வாழ்க்கையால் அகவே என்ன ஆவிகுறிய வாழ்க்கை என்பது நாளுக்கு நால் கடவுள் விரும்புகிறவர்த்தமா அது வெலமடையவே அது வெலமடையவே நீங்கள் வெலப்பட்டு இருக்கிறீர்களா அல்லது வெலவினமாக இருக்கிறீர்களா ஒருவரை நாம் சொல்லிக்கொள்ளலாம் என்னுடைய கடந்தகான வாழ்க்கை நான் இத்தரியாண்டகளாக கிருஸ்துவோடு பயனித்திருக்கிறேன் இவ்வளவு காலமாக எனக்கு தலா அனுபவங்கள் இருக்குது சகலப்பட்டு புரிந்துகொள்ளுற தன்மைக்குடைய எனக்கு இருக்குது தன்மோ இவைகள் எல்லாம் என்னை வெலமாய் காட்டுகிறதா இல்ல இல்ல அதாவது பின்மாற்றம் என்பது ஏதோ ஒரு சாதாரண விஸ்வாசிக்குத்தான் ஏற்படமென்று இல்ல உல்லுக்கா அது விசேஷம் பதிலைந்தா மதிகாரத்திலே நடிக்கப் படிக்கலாம் என்றா அதுலே அண்டவராக ஏசு கிருஸ்து ஒரு ஆவிகுறிய வாழ்க்கையுடைய அது பிரபலியத்தை மிக அழகாக ஒரு மூன்று உவமைகளால் உள்ளக்கி காட்டுகிற உல்லுக்கா பதிலைந்தா மதிகார என்ன அப்படினா ஒன்று ஒருவனக்கு நூறாடுகள் இருந்த அதுலே ஒன்று காணாமல் போனது அலுத் தொலைந்து போன அடுத்ததாக ஒரு வீட்டிலே பத்து வெள்ளி காசை ஒரு ஸ்திரி தொறைத்து போரா காணாமல் போன இன்னொன்று ஒரு ஐச்சூரியவானக்கு ஒரு தனவந்தனக்கு இரண்டு குமாரர்கள் இருந்தார்கள் அதுலே ஒருவன் காணாமல் போரா உடைக்கு உள்ளங்குகிறதா நூற்றல ஒன்னு காணாத பெட்டு ரெண்டாவது பத்தல ஒன்னு காணல ஒன்றாவது ரெண்டுல ஒன்று காணலபா பத்தல ஒன்று நா எதை பத்தோடு பதினொன்று அத்தோடு இதோன்று இல்ல நூறு பேர்ல ஒராள் சர் நூறு பேர்ல ஒராள் எதை பொறுள் இருந்தா எனக்கும் ஆவிகுறிய வாழ்க்கைக்கும் ரொம்ப தூரம் இருக்குது இப்பொழுதான் ரசிகப்பட்டு இருக்கிறேன் இப்பொழுதான் ஏசுவை அறிந்திருக்கிறேன் I am a young believer நான் ஒரு கொடுதை தனமான விஸ்வாசி நூற்றல ஒன்று என்னுடைய அஜமான என்னுடைய மெய்ப்போனை கண்டிப்புடிப்பதற்கு எனக்கு இன்னும் நாட்கள் ஆகணா ஆசிர்வாதம் சௌந்தரித்துக்கொள்வதற்கு இன்னும் எனக்கு காலங்கள் போகணா நூற்றல ஒன்னு எங்கேயோ இருக்கிறேன் புல்லகிலே அல்மா கத்துடைப்படுகிறேன் புல்லகிலே புரிந்துகொள்ளுங்கள் நீங்க நூற்றல ஒண்ணா இருக்கும்போது காணாமல் போகலாம் அது பின்மாற்றம் உண்டாக என்னங்க நூற்றல ஒண்ணா இருக்கும்போதும் உங்களுக்கு பின்மாற்றம் உண்டாக இப்பொழுதாங்க சச்சிக்கு வந்திருக்கிறேன் இப்பொழுதான் கத்திரை தேடிக்கொண்டிருக்கிறேன் அப்பொழுது பின்மாற்றம் உண்டாக நூற்றல ஒண்ணா இருந்தாலோ உடைக்கு பின்மாற்றம் உண்டாக சர் இப்பொழுது நூற்றல ஒன்னு இல்ல பத்தல ஒன்னு இப்பொழுது ரொம்ப நெருக்கமாகிட்டு எல்லா கத்துரூடுக்குடை அது ஆடு தொலைந்து பொனையடம் காடு இப்ப வீடு தொலைந்துது வெள்ளி காசு கொஞ்ச காச்கி உன்னாடு காட்லே எங்கேயோ இருந்து தொழிஞ்சு போச்சுப்பா இப்ப வீட்டுக்கு வந்துட்டு எந்த வீடு தேவனுடைய வீடு திருச்சபை நீ கத்துரூடிய வீட்டிலே உளையேறப்பட்டு பொறுளாக வெள்ளி ஆக இருந்தாலும் தொலைந்து போவாய் பின்மாற்றம் உண்டாகலா
I am Moolgan. Is the concept possible? Never. Is the truth possible? No. Is the personable possible? No. A personable is a person who is in this world. You are a good person, you are not a bad person. That is why I am a good person. Then, how far do you go? I am not like a villain. I am not like a villain. That is a hypothesis. That is a myth, right? Look at me. Look at my truth. I am here, I am there. No sir. I am saying, the problem is not solved. It is very difficult. We have talked about it yesterday. Who touched me? Me? I touched him. You touched me? Who is touching me? You are lying. My mother, she is throwing a sandal at me. What are you throwing sandal at? I will tell you that. The Bible is broken, do you see? I put it on my desk. What is it? Where are you sitting? That is why I am a good person. We have no problem. Oh, God. Hallelujah. The problem is solved. Hallelujah. It has changed into a sponge, it has become a tumbler. Like a cat, if you throw a balloon, it will go like that. No. You are a villain. You are a villain. Sir, we will come to you. We will read one verse again. One, four, and two, the Lord. Twenty-two, the Lord. One, four, and two, the Lord. What is the time? Start. Same, right? Look, David's family has been in the army for a long time. David even lived in the army. He was a big villain. He did not have any enemies. He was a coward. He was not a villain. Only David was there. But there were 600 people. That is his army. However, this verse is written, four days ago, David even, if you read the Bible, you will understand, it has changed into a deity. However, David's family, he had a great army. There were thousands of warriors. You have read the Bible. However, in the forest, in the forest, when David died, his wife, his servant, was there. He was a thief. He stole things. In the Bible, if a man says, this is what I will do. This is what I will say. However, if a man says, this is what I will do. It is not about David. He was in a place, he stole things. He was in a place, he stole things. He was in a place, David, he was saved by the Lord. This is what I will say. He was in a place, he stole things. This is all in the Bible. Why? Because of this? Because of this, a villain. You are a villain. Or a villain. Sir, the reasons are, why a villain is a villain, another villain is a villain? A family is a family. Why a villain is a villain? Another family is a family. Why a villain is a villain? There are seven truths. I will write it down. Sir, let us see. Until now, I have said it. If not, I will write it down. I will say it very briefly. Sir, first, the truth. Why a villain is a villain, another villain is a villain? One, Samuvel. Fifty-five, the Lord. Fifty-five, the Lord. One, Samuvel, fifty-five, the Lord, fifty-five, the Lord. Twenty-one, again. Go, go, go. Here, in the two verses, you have read something. I have not heard anything. I am sitting here. Okay. What is written? Some are the truth, some are the wrong. Okay? Moses, this is what I am saying. In Egypt, he is a villain. He is a villain because of his friends. I am telling you. Simson, this is what I am saying. The minister is a villain because of him. He is a villain because of some truths. He is a villain. He is a villain because of his friends. He is a villain. They are the ones who are stealing. Who are they? He is a villain, he is a villain. He is a villain. Why should I steal? This is what I am saying. The Egyptians, 400 years ago, Egypt was besieged. They were going to war. The Egyptians, the army, how many people came? 240,000 people. 240,000 people. What are they doing? They are going away. A soldier, 600 people. What is it? It is not a small thing. Then, 662. We will do 2000. 240,000. This is not a small thing. They are going to war. They are going to war. Moses, where is he? Yes, the leaders of the army, 300,000. Then, women, they are 100,000. Women, none of them. A little bit older women. Then, the warriors. Then, the soldiers. They are going to war. Some are going to war. A single woman, Moses, she is going to war. She is looking at the field. She is going to die. Yes. How old are they? Who is going to die? Very a villain. Oh, I am catching you. Come here. They are going to war. They cannot fight. 40 years ago, the enemy was defeated. The Egyptians, they have been besieged for a long time. Why? One of them. What is it? What is it? They are, who are they? What is it? They are, thieves. What is it? Are we Egyptians? Are we Christians? Are we believers? Yes. They are all dead. That is why. We are not here. The deep valley is there. I am talking about it. There are others. I am talking about it. They are all dead. They are going to die. Okay, okay. They are all dead. Thieves. That is a defeat. Then, they are thieves. Where are you going? My wife, I am going to her. They are thieves. One. They are thieves. They have a Christian tradition. They eat coffee, drink tea, paper. What is it? You ask me, I will tell you. What is it? No, no, no. They eat food, a vegetable. No? Oh, a vegetable. Turn around, turn around, turn around. Turn around, turn around. What is it? I don't eat dinner. I watch TV. Sir. They are thieves. They are thieves. They are thieves. They are thieves. They are all defeated. Sir, they are defeated. They are defeated. They are the Egyptians. That is a villain. It is written in the Bible. What is it? They are stolen. They are villains. A villain is a villain. A good person is a villain. A villain is a villain. He is stolen. Be careful. Why should I steal? I will say it. He is a villain. He is a villain. He is not only a villain. He is in the TV. He is in the TV. Yes. You have left him. He will come up. I will steal your money. I will take it. Sir. Since you stole the money, you stole the money from the Egyptians. Moses and Jesus know it. They know the truth. What have I done? They cannot fight. They are a villain. Why are they stealing? The army of the man has been defeated. They are a villain. They are stealing. The man is stealing. The army is defeated. So, he changed the army into a king. He defeated the army because of him. The army is defeated. What is it? The army of Amalek, in the war, all the enemies have been taken. They have been taken. You have read it. Some have been thrown away. They have been taken away. Some have been taken away. They have been taken away. They are all defeated. Yes. Hello. You are a deity. That is the problem. Yes, sir. You are a deity. You have come to the army. What did the army say? They are throwing away their weapons. Right? What are you doing? All of them, all the enemies have been defeated. This is not necessary. This is the best. I will tell you. This is not necessary. You will see. Even if you look at it, you will get it. I think. This is a good thing. It is a good thing. That is your problem. Why? Because you are a deity. It is there. I am there. However, now, you are a villain. What is it? They know it. What is it? A traitor. That is what I am saying. That is what you are reading. Now, read it. You will understand. A Christian. He is there. They have come to him. Sir. Yes. Some have come. Some have been killed. He is saying, he is saying, I think he will be here. He is saying it. He is saying it. What is he saying? Your deity, the army of your. What is he saying? What is he saying? Your deity, the army of your. Your deity, the army of your. Amalek? Do you think he is a deity? 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 Do you think he is a villain? When you ask a police officer, the army is there. That is a good thing. Amalek? That is all I can say. He is telling you. He is telling you. What are you saying? He is telling you. What are you saying? Your deity, the army of your. He is coming. That is what I am saying. That is what I am saying. What are you saying? Our deity, the army of your. He is coming. I will say it. He is saying, your deity, the army of your. Do you think he is a villain? Do you think he is a deity? Do you think he is a deity? Does he protect you? Does he share with you? Does he give you mercy? Does he save you? Does he curse you? Does he kill you? Do you think he is a deity? Amalek? Amalek? Why are you a villain? Why are you a villain? First, the truth. Amalek, the army of the. He is defeated. Amalek, the army of the. He is defeated. You are a villain. The army is defeated. There is a verse. Let us read it. Let us read it. Fifty-five, the Lord. Eight, the Lord. These people, I will read it. These people, hello. You are a villain. You are a villain. You are a villain. You are defeated. They are dead. Hello. You are a villain. You are a villain. You are a villain. What are you saying? You are a villain. You are defeated. However, you are not defeated. Do you think the army is defeated? If the army is defeated, it is a good thing. The army is defeated. It is the only thing. What is my opinion? What is my main point? We have talked about it. The army is a weapon. In the weapon, there is a bullet. What is it? To protect me, to save me, to save me. It is only him. Hallelujah. He is the only one. He is the only one. I will say it. What have you done? I have done it. Hallelujah. The army is defeated. One, six. One, six. Four, thirty-three, twenty-three. Look. Yes. You are a villain. I am a villain. I am a villain. I am a villain. I am afraid. It is the army. Then, do you think the villain is a villain? I am afraid. If the army is a villain, the army is defeated. You must be afraid. You must be afraid. You must be afraid. If you are afraid, you will be afraid. If you are afraid, if you are afraid, I have anyone. I am a villain. 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 I am afraid. The people who are scared of me, you will be afraid. You will be afraid. This is a big thing. This is a big thing. Nothing. I will say it. No, no, no. The army of the, the villain is defeated. It is defeated. I will say something. The army of the, I will call it. For example, I will call it. I will call it. How many hours? How many hours? I will say it. 6:00. Yes. 6:00. Yes. 6:00. However, how many hours? I will say it. Let us do it. He is, 6:00. Yes. Then, what is it? Some are watching. The message is here. We will listen. We will listen. He is a villain. You are a villain. I will look at it. I will look at it. I will say it. How far do you go? 6:00. It is the same. A villain. He is 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 a villain. Every day, I am tired. I am tired. What can I do? I am tired. The army is defeated. You give the time to the army. You give the time to the army. I will say it. I will say it. When is it? I will give it to the army. Hallelujah. You are a villain. I will say it. When is it? When is it? Oh, I am a villain. I am a villain. I give it to you. You give it to me. If you are afraid, I will give it to the army. I will write it. I will write it. You give the time to the army. You give the money to the army. You give the money to the army. You give the money to the army. Some people do not know. I will say it. How do you treat them? You are a villain. You are a villain. Do you understand? Do you? I am a villain. I am a villain. You are there. You give the money to the army. You are a villain. You are a villain. You are a villain. The army of the is defeated. The army of the is defeated. You are all defeated. That is what we are doing. He is a villain. He is there. Then, the army of the is defeated. Amalek, the army is a good thing. Your deity, the army of your. That is what I am saying. I am a villain. How much mercy do you give? You are a Christian. What is wrong? You are a Christian. You need to be a king. However, you are a Christian. That is what I said. No. How many people are there? You are a villain. 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 You give everything. Do you understand? What is it? Your deity, the army of your. That is what I said. Sir, read the Bible. Song. Forty-one, one. What is it? Dear, you are a villain. No, sir. What is it? You are, your deity, your deity. When you say it, he is a villain. When I read the song, before the song, I am a child. Read it. David, Yuda, in the land of the sun, singing a song. Where is he? He is in the east. Two, three, four, five. He is in the land of the sun. No one is there. No friends. No bonds. No one is there. He is a kid. He cannot see. He cannot see. He is an orphan. He is like Anade. He is in the land of the sun. He is saying it. Do you hear it? I am there. Where am I? I am there. I am there. I am a virgin. I am saying it. I am there. I am a virgin. Look, even if you are a virgin, now, you are your deity. Say it. Oh, Hallelujah. Oh, Leluya, I am not. I am not. He is speaking. All of them. Do you hear? All of them. Amen. Your soul. Your life. He is a god. He is not. 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 I will say that. God. You are my God. My God. Even if I throw my hands. You are my God. Even if I throw my hands. Even if I am not. You are my God. Even if I am poor. Do you hear? How far is church? I am not. Where is the soul? There is a tree. In the village. I was at the farm. It is our village. Where is it? I went there. It is a village. Then. A house. Ah. They went. What will happen? Only everyone will come. I will go for a day. I will go at 11. I will go there. Do you see it? What is it? Come, come. What is it? This is. I will say that. This is. Do you want to eat? What is it? Come. Eat. All went away. Do you want to eat? Where are you going? I don't understand. When? I came to you. What do you think? If one has a God. If he has a God. He is my God. Who is he? No? In the past. Yes, Christ. Some people are talking. Yes, they are talking. A boy. For the Lord. For the Lord. For the Lord. The Lord is the King. I am a servant. For the Lord. A boy. There is another boy. Do you know? Christians. Saints. They are like that. He is a friend. It is not. He is a boy. It is not today. It is today. A boy. There is another boy. Yes, he is going. What is it? Come. I will eat. Do you want to eat? Yes, I want to eat. Yes, he is a little boy. He is a big boy. Do you want to eat? Do you want to eat? For a boy. There is another boy. They said. Life is a poem. You are a person. Do you want to go? There are four boys. David. He is not a God. Singing. God. I am a God. I am a sinner. I am a murderer. I am a thief. I am a murderer. I am a believer. They are saying that. He is my God. Savil says, "You are God." But David says, "He is my God." Why is he a liar? Why is he a liar? David. He is a God. He is before. He is before. He is before. I am not. The. He is a boy. He is a big boy. God. Do you think? Do you take away my food? Do you think? How many of you are sitting there? Why? David. He is a God. He is a God. He is a God. Hello? I am saying that. He is a God. He is a God. They are gods. If you are a God. You are a liar. You are not a liar. Not a liar. You are not a liar. Or you are a liar. Okay? Okay, another topic. I will talk about it. I have to say one. I have said seven. I will say it. One pond. Eight days. Eight days. Hmm. 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 Ah. There are two people. No? One is David. Savil. What is in his hand? He is a swan. What is in his hand? A dog. It is a dog. Hello? Do you have a dog? He is a swan. What is a dog? If it is a dog. If it is a dog. There is a poem. I will say that. I saw it. Look at the weather. Savil. He has a 42 years old. He has 36 years old. It is a dog. It is a dog. He is a dog. So the dog's hair. It is used for him. It is used for him. It is used for him. Where is it? It is in the wood. What is it? It is a dog. It is a dog. It is a swan. Jacob. He is a swan. He is a swan. Do you hear? He is a swan. Or? It is a dog. If it is a dog. In the Bible. If you speak well. You will be able to speak. Joseph. Is he? I am. I saw it. There are two people. They are sitting there. They are sitting there. They are sitting there. I saw it. They are eating. Then ask them. How did you do? Why did you come to jail? Oh, you are asking. Why Jacob? We are two people. I am a God. Now I see a God. I saw him. Come. Then I saw him. Then I saw him. Then I saw him. I saw him. I saw you. Oh, you are a god. I saw you. It is a truth. It is a truth. He is saying that. Come. He is saying that. He is not saying that. No. But Joseph says. I have finished. Do you know? I am here. I am. No? There is a big story. But he says. I am here. I am not. I am not. A man who is not a man. He does not talk about it. A man who is not a man. He does not talk about it. Their name. No? Everyone should have a problem. You should avoid it. You should avoid it. You should avoid it. You are a brother. You are a brother. There is a poem. If it is a dog. He is a swan. Do you have a poem? One pond. 47 poems. It is a dog. Hey? Amen. Hey? Then it is a dog. It is a dog. It is a dog. Amen. 57 songs. 57 songs. 18. Jacob 1:26. We will talk about it. We will talk about it. Our name is a dog. Everyone should have a problem. You should avoid it. How will you avoid it? He is a swan. David's hand. He is a swan. Savile's hand. It is a dog. 43. 43. Do you learn it? Do you learn it? 43. It is. What is a swan? He is a dog. The name. He is a dog. He is a dog. I think you understand. He is a swan. It is a dog. Why is a liar? Why is a liar? He is a dog. He is a liar. 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 He is a dog. He is a swan. He is a dog. He is a liar. Do you have a liar? Do you have a liar? I will tell you.
All the love. The deep love.